Stacy says, "I read that first sentence," and said, "Oh, no."
Either he's mad.
It is 8:30, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would extend an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed, but since we have no one in the audience, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Would we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And we did not have, Department had reports listed because we're doing a short meeting today, but I would like to add to the agenda Bob Hill to talk about emergency management and the weather, what's going on in the county. So, any objection to me adding him to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay, and we'll put him back where we normally do Department head reports.
And just note, too, for those watching, Commissioner Bartley is with us via telephone.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other changes to the agenda? Everyone in favor of approving the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The agenda's approved. We have a consent agenda today. On our consent agenda, we have approval of minutes and approval of personnel action notices.
Second.
Anyone have any changes to the consent agenda? We'll have a roll call vote for the consent agenda.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley? Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Hill, we're going to have you come up now and do your report.
Good morning. Obviously, we've got a weather system that moved in on us. It's hitting a little bit harder up north from Huron to Watertown in that area. Last night, there was several accidents on the interstate up around White and farther north. Today, we expect the snow to continue falling. We expect about four inches total during the daytime, then another two inches tonight. Right now, the temperature is above freezing, but we expect it to be 26 degrees by 5:00 PM. Between 12 o'clock and 1:00, we expect the winds to start increasing. They're moved from right now probably five miles per hour, and they could gust up as high as 35 miles an hour. And if they start to gust that high, we would not recommend travel until the winds die down on you. And just as a water caution, this weekend, we got a cold front starting to move in. Friday night, it'll be minus eight. New Year's Day, the high is going to be minus one with a low of minus 11. That's all I've got.
Anybody have any questions? I have a question on another topic for you. I know that we had a reach out on the Kingsbury County matter.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we send any resources, or did they get it resolved before we did anything?
They got it resolved before we had to commit resources, but we did. The Highway Department worked with us, and we put our command trailer inside the Highway Department. The number one thawed out, and it had a mechanical issue with it. So, we was preparing to move out. And that was a, I got the call when I was in Atlanta, Georgia. And then, of course, I let the commission know what was going on. And we was only going to commit if it was going to be, probably end up if it was going to be a long-term thing. But they rectified this situation real fast and got the one individual off the lake, and he survived. The one above, and then, of course, they did have a casualty in the lake.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to routine business, approval of claims.
Move approval. Second.
Any comments regarding claims? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Regular business, action to approve Resolution 18-54, a resolution approving the fiscal year 2019 official pay plan for Brookings County.
Move approval.
Second.
Stacy, could you explain what we're doing here?
This is the pay plan for the entire county. It lists out all of the different positions and their grades, and how many people are in that position for each department. So, this goes into effect January 1 and is approved in the 2019 budget. One note, was just now alerted to, the information tech support specialist, this is Sean's position. That should be an N-10, that changed during budgets. So, we would need an amendment to make that an N-10. But other than that, it is fine.
Can you tell us the percent of, or that? On our grades, this is what I'm asking, from our pay scale last year, what percent of increase did we do across the board?
One and a half percent.
It was one and a half? Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Would we have a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to amend so that for our information technology support specialist, that'll read N-10 instead of N-9? That was the motion, is that correct? Okay.
Yep.
Any discussion regarding that? All in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
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 And then, on the motion itself, is there any further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote on that.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Main motion is amended, carried.
Moving on to Item B, action to approve Resolution 18-55, a resolution approving contingency transfers for fiscal year 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Stacy, you want to explain what we're doing?
So, after the December 18 meeting, after we did contingency transfers, that meeting as well, Vicki and I met and went over the budgets again and looked at what claims had come in since the 18th. The claims on the 18th were paid, and we found several other lines, GL lines, that were still going to be short at the year-end. So, just a few additional expenses. Judicial, again, those are, you know, a lot of the court-appointed attorneys' claims come out of that, and we don't know, we really don't have a good way of knowing when those bills were going to come in. And so, that one needed additional contingency. Human resources, we continue to have job postings. I think we just had three additional job postings that we approved at the last meeting, so we gave that some additional contingency. Behavioral health, again, just some additional claims came in. And then, BCOAC, there were a few other things that came in, too, that we needed some extra funds for.
Anyone have any questions for Stacy? So, we set aside in our 2018 budget, was it $600,000 for contingency?
Just over that, yes.
And once we make these transfers, how much will be left in contingency? Approximately?
About half.
Yeah, about half of it.
About half of it still will be left, give or take.
And that 300,000 will go back into the general fund, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
All right. Anyone else have a question? We'll have a roll call vote.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action to approve Agreement 18-111, a food service contract between Brookings County and Hy-Vee Foods, Brookings, South Dakota, for inmate meals.
Move approval.
Second.
Sheriff, would you like to say anything about this?
The bids were opened at the December 18 meeting, so, and so this is just the contract. We approved the bids, this is the contract now with Hy-Vee.
Anyone have any questions? We'll have a roll call vote.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, action to approve Agreement 18-112, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
So moved.
Second.
Was there anything, Brian, that you wanted to add on this?
I would've, but I didn't get a chance to get out and look at it with Dick, so he went ahead and approved it because he said he had reviewed it before he took off.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item E, action to approve purchases from the Fire Department Long-Term Fund in the amount of $10,736.03 for radios.
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments? Stacy, did you want to explain anything on this?
These are just requests that come in from time to time from Chief Hartman to pay some expenses out of that long-term fund. So, this request, we've maybe had, maybe one other one this year that I can think of. And then, this kind of goes in hand-in-hand with the next action item as well, where we transfer the remaining budget from '18. And we give them that cash into that long-term fund that keeps that long-term fund replenished, so.
Anything from any of the commissioners? We'll have a roll call vote.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, action to transfer cash from Budget Line 101-4-211-4291 in the amount of $6,387.21 to Fund 759, the Brookings County Fire Trust Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote? Excuse me, we can do a voice vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item G, action to approve a transfer as per-budget appropriations from General Fund 101-4-911-4260 to County Building Fund 301-3-371-0000 in the amount of $177.43. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Stacy?
This was budgeted for, in the general fund, as a transfer, as a transfer out to pay for the parking lot for this building. The work that was done this year was just paid out of the regular budget because we, all we did this year was the demolition and the grade work. The actual construction of the parking lot will take place in 2019. So, what this does is transfer these funds over to the building fund, the 301 fund. It will roll into that fund balance in the 301 fund, but then, when we have the expense of constructing the parking lot next year, we can do a supplemental budget hearing and get access to those funds to pay for that project. So, we anticipated that the project may be done this year, and it wasn't. So, this is just allowing us to have those funds moved into the appropriate building fund where it'll be expensed out of next year.
Anybody have a question?
The 177, that's our share of the parking lot?
Yes, we will split the cost, and that was just an estimate, so I don't know. I don't know that that's the final total. That was the estimate back when we budgeted in '17, spring of '17, when we budgeted, so. But yes, we would be sharing that expense with the city.
Stacy, when we get back to your report, you had done an attachment that talked about current assignments, and it said that we had for the administration building, $500,000 that was assigned to this building?
I believe that was for the purchase of the BCOAC, so I think we need to clean that up. We can either unassign it or reassign it to something else.
So, when it says admin building on the report, that wasn't money that's assigned to be used for this property that we're in right now?
It is, yes. It is. And I believe it was for, well, then, it wouldn't have been for, I don't, do you recall? What that 500,000 was for?
I would have to look back, too.
Yeah. I was thinking it was, the amount just stuck in my head for that it was the purchase of BCOAC, but for admin building, that doesn't make sense, so we'll have to look back.
The city's paying us, is it?
No, no.
They're paying us 100,000 a year.
Yes, the city's paying us 100,000 dollars a year.
And I guess my question just was, if we have $500,000 set aside for this building, why we're not taking the 177 out of the 500 instead of current budget? I just wondered why we were doing it this way.
Because this was what was set aside for the parking lot.
I do understand that.
Yeah.
But we already levied for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, yes, I mean, there is money there, set aside for the building. We'd have to look back to see what that was for. I don't, I can't recall offhand. I think we'd had a conversation about that, and the amount, I think it was just stuck that it was the purchase of the OAC, but now with, under admin building, that doesn't really make sense, so.
Maybe another time you could report back to us on that.
Yeah, we'll figure that out.
Okay. Any further discussion on item number G? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Item number H, action to approve a vacancy, to fill vacancy for the Director of Equalization position.
Move approval.
Second.
Stacy?
Director of Equalization Chris Lilla submitted his resignation effective January 4 of 2019. So, this is a request to start advertising for that position. If we advertise now, it'll close, you know, in a couple of weeks from now, and then, we would be looking at scheduling interviews. And I guess that's a board discussion, if you want to do that as a full board, or if you want to do a committee of commissioners. I know in the past, for this position, it was the full board that conducted the interviews. But that's a discussion to have, but this is just to get this job posted, advertised for.
Any questions? Based on the timeline that you said, and this really isn't directly related to the motion, we're going to have a period of time where we do not have a Director of Equalization. Do we need to do something for an interim appointment, or anything like that?
That, yes, it probably would be a good idea to do that if you feel it's necessary. You could do that at your January 8 meeting if you felt like you needed to appoint someone as an interim basis.
So, you'll put that on the agenda for that, for a discussion?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
So, the position, you know, if we advertise now, the position would close around the 10th of January. So, we'd probably be looking at scheduling interviews, you know, maybe if we'd get a committee to go look through those applications and determine how many you, who and how many you would like to interview. We could do that maybe about a week later, maybe the week of the 21st, so.
All right. We'll have a voice vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number I, end-of-year designations, discussion and possible action to assign fund balance dollars.
So, included with my, bring that up.
Stacy, do we want a motion before, or?
No, no, I think we need to, because we don't know what we're going to do yet.
All right, thank you.
So, as part of my staff report, which is now up here, it's one of the, like, the second page of my staff report, there was some information on the current fund balances that we have in each of the funds. The general fund, we have that 500,000 for the admin building. We had, which Vicki and I will look into, that we may be able to just unassign that at a later date. And you can do that at any time. Highway projects, 614-101, and then, future economic development highway projects, 4.75 million and 2 million in the general fund for the detention center. In the building fund, the 301 fund, we have just over 2.4 million assigned for the detention center. There's nothing specifically assigned within the highway fund at this time. I sat down and did the, just some surplus analysis estimates. So, these would be estimates at year-end. When I did these last, I think it was maybe last Wednesday or Thursday, you can see if we assigned different amounts, the zero, the one, 1.5 up to 2.5, and the estimate at that day was the 44% down to the 26%. You have to keep in mind, we still have some payroll and remaining bills left outstanding in 2018. You know, if we had no other, if we had no other bills to pay, but we already paid some bills today, but if we had no other bills to pay, that middle estimate would be pretty close to accurate. It's probably closer to the percentage on the right because we still have payroll to pay yet in '18 and some additional bills that will be paid out of '18. So, Vicki and I discussed that we like to be around that 25% to 28% at year-end. Historically, where we have liked to be. So, our recommendation would be to assign around that 1.75 to the $2 million would get us, at a comfortable level, we feel. Now, you want to do enough because I really, you have to do something to get us under that 40%. It looks like you have to be underneath the 40% at year-end. So, you'll have to do something now.
Before we get deeper into that, because I think we need to talk about the 502,000 on the STIP payment, let's talk about that, and then, I would like to talk about adding some lines for our assignments and maybe having a policy on how we handle some things. And then, we could talk about numbers, if that would be acceptable with everyone. So, Stacy, tell us about the STIP payment and what, how you think we should handle that.
Well, last week, it was, there was a bill that the Highway Department received from South Dakota Department of Transportation for just over 502,000. And this was the remaining bill for the last bridge in the STIP program that we did north of Bruce. Now, this bill came as a surprise to the Highway Department, and welcome to your first week, Brian. On that bridge, the last payment the county made on that bridge project was back in August of 2017, so it's been almost a year and a half since we'd made any payments on that. I think the Highway Department had felt that that bridge had been done, and that project was done and paid for. Brian, I think, reached out to Doug Kinnenberg at the Department of Transportation, and he said that they finalized the project, DOT finalized that project in March of this year. They didn't send the final bill until now, last week. I think it was dated the 13th, and we received it last week. And it was just over 502,000, I believe. Now, I have a couple different options. The option is, we do have money in that budget, the 2018 budget, to pay for it. We do, we can just pay that bill, we can get it paid in January, they submit it through the claims process, and so, we can just get it paid, it'll affect the '18 budget, and it's done and paid for, and we move on. The other thing we could do is, probably in February sometime, just because the process takes that long, you could do a supplemental budget hearing and a resolution, and then, use the fund balance and pay for that bill in '19. It's really an extra step that I just don't feel is necessary, so my recommendation would be to pay that bill now. Just submit it. If you want, I can bring up the Highway Department budget, but we have, we still have plenty in there to pay for that. That doesn't affect what we have in the discussion with the highway numbers for the big project, that 637,000, won't affect that. So, I don't know if Brian has anything to add to that, but my recommendation would just be to get the bill paid.
I guess the only thing that I was thinking about was those two smaller structures. I'm not sure exactly of the cost of each one of those, but that didn't get done this year that were planned to be done.
And Dick gave me a preliminary estimate of about $150,000 because the supply piece of that is done. The casts have been made for those, it would just be the labor to get those installed next year. So, I still think there would be funds, if we needed to, to do a supplemental budget hearing still, to pay for those out of fund balance, the money, I think, is, it's fine, it's there. And we may just be able to pay it out of the '19 budget and be fine, too, and we can watch that.
That was my only.
Yeah.
And that's 150,000 total, not each?
Correct, that's what Dick said, 150,000 dollars for labor on the two structures.
So, would we have a consensus from the commission to go ahead and pay that 502,000 out of the 2018 budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and so, then, you can put that on for our January meeting and for action on that.
And we just, you can visit with Linda and just submit that bill through the regular claims process, and I can reach out to her, too, and let her know.
We've got some other outlying bills with the DOT, but we'll make sure that one's separated. And I just, you know, is there anything else? Because it seems like we've got 500,000 left over at the end of the year in this budget. It seems, you know, it seems to be quite a bit of money to be able to now cash flow, and we weren't ready. So, is there other projects besides the two bridges? Or something that we're not being paid for this year that when they, if they come up and get paid next year, that we won't have enough money for?
I can't, I don't, I don't know, I don't foresee anything. The only, I know the other larger ticket item next year is the bridge by the basin electric plant that's estimated to cost about 660,000, but I believe that was budgeted for in '19, in '19, as part of Dick's budget.
Nothing in '18 besides those two bridges? Not that I'm aware of. Okay. But it's hard for you to answer that anyway, I mean, yeah.
And the reason I wanted to have this discussion before we talk about our assignments is, I'd like to talk about how we're doing our assignments. We have hit and missed on this probably every year, the four years I've been on the commission. And I'd like us to consider perhaps setting an informal policy where if we know that we have committed money to something, for example, we're going to need to commit $1.3 million to those river bridges on Highway 77 because that's our share, I'd like that to be showing up as an assignment with a line item for those river bridges. And we could do that. Stacy and I talked a little bit about this yesterday. We could go ahead and have those line items, we could have the location and the bridge number on there, put money in, and then, the concern she's always had is that we don't want our reports to get so long. Once, you know, 10 years from now, you wouldn't want that anymore. But she thinks that maybe after five years has passed, or we've gone past our $4 million in the big program, whatever, we could pick out some period, that those lines could be renamed and reused. And what I'd like you to consider is that we pick a dollar amount, that when we know we're committing to a project and it's over a certain dollar amount, we put a line item on the budget and put that money aside for that. And I don't know what that is, it might be 200,000, 300,000, whatever, I think anything above that, for sure. But if you have a thought on that, where that would be our informal policy is that when we have a line item that's in excess of that amount, we don't want don't want a line item for every little thing. And maybe we need a line item for small structures, and it doesn't have to identify the small structure, and we just stick our money for small structures in there. But it, it just concerns me that it's hard keeping track as we go through the big program in particular of what monies we've got committed and which ones we've saved for that particular project already. What are your thoughts?
I, I guess I agree. I guess my concern is I don't want to set money aside and then levy for it later. I want to use, set, use that money and set aside, and so it doesn't get double, I don't know how you say, double taxed, I guess. So, I, I, I think it's easier, or not easier, I think it's more transparent of what we're using those dollars for and where they're coming from, and that we've already have money set aside, we've already mill-levied for them, and that's what we need to use in down the road in a year, a year and a half. So, I, I would agree. I, I know you don't want 10 items in a row here of each little thing, but I think, you know, big grant, river bridges certainly would, were there, and then if you want to do big grant, Sinai Bridge or something for that, and have different line items for each, we'll know what they are and what, what money we've set aside. So, I, I've been a big proponent for that for a long time.
I am too. I agree, keep track of where it's at. At the end of the year, you know, you, we have that money left over for that bridge when it gets completed in the following year.
Mr. Miller, anything?
No, I think, I feel like this is more for the commissioners to know where they're at because Vicki and Stacy do know, but, but that's fine.
But nobody knew about the 502,000. If we would've had a line item for that, we would've known. Yeah.
Real quick, my question then is, you've given us the totals of what we have there, how much money in each fund do we have that's unassigned?
So, in, in the highway fund, we have about 4.8 million that's unassigned.
Okay, and so that is not money that's assigned for anything, that's not like the two culvert bridges, that's not money for those two, right? The two culverts for 150, that, they were, they were coming out of.
No, it would come, that was, that will roll into fund balance at the end of this year.
Right.
It would roll into that, 4.8, whatever is left in the budget rolls into fund balance, so.
So, when we're making the designations to try to get down to 26 or 28?
That's just in the general fund, we do not have to do that in any other fund, just the general fund. So when I talk about those initial assignments, we need to do that in the general fund only.
And so the 4 million that's in our road and bridge fund, it doesn't need to be assigned because it's already assigned for the road and bridge?
Correct.
Except for we want to assign it so we know which projects. And that 4.8 million, Stacy, just because I get mixed up on this, how much of that is fund balance and how much of that's current budget?
It's all fun, 4.8 is all fund balance.
That, okay, and then we still have money left for this, in this year's budget in addition to the 4.8, right?
Yes.
And how much is that?
We have about, before the 502 and before the rest of the bills are paid, we have just over 2 million, so.
And that will roll into fund balance at the end, whatever isn't paid out of there?
Yeah, but the 502 will come out of that, plus some additional payroll, some, and some additional bills will come out of that. So, potentially, there could be about, a rough estimate, a million dollars would roll into fund balance.
So when we go into 2019, our fund balance for a road and bridge, conservatively speaking, would be 5.8 million?
Give or take, yes.[853.43][853.43](laughter) So what I have up here in front of you, and I passed out a new sheet, because as I look at these numbers, every time I look at them, I seem like, seem like I make a change to them, to make them, make more sense to me, and I want to walk you through this. This is just, um, this is all related pretty much to our big programs, and I'm going to see, if I can walk you through this and see if I can, we can get all on, get on the same page, so we kind of have a chance to see what we need to do. So, starting, the, the projects, as you can see, are over on the left-hand side. In 17, we had the first river bridge that we were awarded the grant for, and we had three preservation grants. In 18, we got the second river bridge, and then it was at 50/50. The Sinai, and we also got the Sinai Bridge at 50/50. In 2019 now, we do have a preliminary engineering grant as well that's listed on there. So as you go across, you can see the estimates, the grant amounts, the county match, and then the, the river bridges, things that have already been bid and those bid amounts, if they've been bid and we have a bid amount, that's listed over in the far right, and the yellow is highlighted because they bid those two river bridges together. So we're fortunate in that that came in just a little bit, a little bit less than what the estimate was. So then you have a totals line down at the bottom, so the county match is that 2.2221, 2,222,100.
That includes the Sinai Bridge?
That includes the Sinai Bridge.
So could we go back to the river bridges because I have a question?
Yes.
When Doug was here at our last meeting, he said to figure 3.6 million for those two river bridges, and that our share would be 100, 1.8 million. Now, you've got 1.3 and you've got a slightly different number, did some additional information come in after that, what changed that?
No, because he, his planning isn't really an unknown.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
His, his saying it was going to be, our, our portion was going to be 1.8 is really an unknown, because there's these added expenses at the end of these projects, and I think that's why we, we ended up with that stip bridge too, that anything that goes over the, the bid amount, we have to pay, the county is responsible for 100%. So, we can increase, we can increase that, but what, and I did look back and got some numbers from Doug, and what he had, I just took numbers off of his, what he gave me to pu, plug these in. So if we want to do some more, we can, to be on the safe side if we want to.
So, when he said 1.8 at our last meeting, and you're saying 1.3 at this meeting, for those two bridges as our share, that's a 500,000 difference, and that's just in case we go over the bid?
Yes, I believe so. Because these are from, from actual estimates. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not speaking in terms of the unknowns right now, this, I'm speak, this is really just based off the estimated project costs, so he prob.
Didn't the bids come in lower?
The 1.3 is off your actual bid, correct?
No, it is not. I don't believe, no. It's based off the 3.4 pro, project estimate.
And the bid came in for the two together at 3.6, right?
Yes, so that, my estimate's already a little high. At the, um, my county match is a little bit high because it's based off the project estimate, not the bid.
Well, okay, so the bid amount here, the 3,560,000, that was the actual bid? So when he told us the bid was 3.6, that's, that was not, okay. All right.
But then how come, how come the 1.3 isn't based on?
The 3,560 is the actual bid, correct?
I think so.
And that.
Based on what Stacy's saying, okay. And we're at a 80/20 on that, is that correct? No, we're 50/50 on that.
50/50 on one and 80/20 on the other.
So we know we're going to need a million and a half for our 50/50.
So, so what?
That's, those are combined though. There's one that's 80/20 and the other's 50/50, so it's, how they're going to figure that.
So the estimated total project cost was 3.434 million, that was the estimates that are not, those are just based of estimates. The grant amount and the county match, are those based off the 1.4, or are they based off the value on the far right that was our actual?
The, the county match is based off the estimated cost.
Of the 3.4, the one left over there?
The 3.4, yes.
Okay.
So, the bid amount, the low bid was the 3,560,000. So, so my estimate is still a little bit higher, and he, and, and I think what Doug, what Doug was saying was that there's just some unknown, so it's probably going to be higher. So I just stuck with the estimated project cost because I don't know, it's an unknown at this point.
And we could take of the 4.8 million that's unassigned in the road and bridge fund, and put a new line that said river bridges and had the bridge numbers because we should have both things if we could, and assign out of that fund 1.3 million today, and then if something happened and we wanted to unassign that, return it to the, to the 201 general fund, or the 201 fund, we could do that, right? We can unassign in that fund, it stays in that fund, but we can unassign.
Not general.
Yeah, exactly.
So, if we just keep, if we keep going down, so that's the estimated county match, the 2.222. In 2018, which we're not going to touch anymore, is that 634,000. There's a line in the 2018 budget that said big grant projects. What's remaining in that is 634,000. So for sure, I thought we'd want to assign that no matter what, and we can assign more or less, but that for sure was, was dedicated to projects in, was budgeted in 18. So, then if you're looking at that total match, what's left is the 1.5, that's with, both with, with, that includes the two river bridges, the Sinai Bridge, and your, and your preservation grants, and your preliminary engineering grants. If you don't do the Sinai Bridge, if you don't assign that, because we know, we have been told that project is not happening until 2020, I took that out just for kind of an argument's sake, it's down to that 7.75, but that, you'd also need the 6.634. So then there's some estimates too with, with and without the, that Sinai Bridge for 19, because we know it's not happening until 2020. In the 19 budget, there is a budget line for big matching grants, and that amount is That is in the 19 budget.
Could you say that again, 1 what?
That's on your sheet there.
It's right here.
Yep, the 20, it says 2019 budget.
So, would it be possible for us, as soon as we start using the 2019 monies, not out of any, not out of fund balance, and not out of the general, or the 2018 budget, to take that 1.3 that we have in the 2019 budget and assign it right away to, to the river bridges, or do we not have the money in the fund at that point to do that in the 201?
You don't want to assign that 1.3 million. You can't assign budgeted money in 19 into the general, into the fund, into fund balance.
That's what I wanted to know.
You cannot do that, no.
You see the problem?
Yeah. Mill-levied for it and didn't need it.
Well, I would like us, this is, this is what I'm proposing, then you guys can say no, or yes, or whatever, okay? Is that we take of our 4.8 that we've got, assign 1.3 to those river bridges, and then that we take and assign, the Sinai Bridge money is that 811, subtract 634 from that, whatever that number is, that, or 684 that we've got in our current budget, assign that and put the difference, those two amounts, so we've got the Sinai Bridge set aside and paid, and then we got the money there. The, the preliminary engineering amounts that are not large amounts, we've talked before about just having a big program match, we could put some money in there for that and pay those out of there if we choose, or we could just have that come out of regular budget, because those are not huge amounts. And then the bridge that's over by Basin Electric, do we know anything about that bridge yet? What, what are we committed to on that?
660.
There's, the estimate is 660,000, in my understanding.
We're going to pay 100% of that, right?
Yeah.
We are. So this is the 19 budget for the highway. So you see, um, under repairs and maintenance, 2.4 million, supplies of materials, 1.25, that bridge will come out of those lines, the expenses for that bridge. And then the third line down in that middle section, other current expenses, you can see big matching grant, the big matching grant.
So, okay.
And that's the Sinai Bridge right there.
The reason there is going to be a million dollars transferring over at the end of the year here out of the operating of the highway into unassigned balance is because 643,000 of it was for the big grant.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and so, um, it doesn't, we might as well just make one, one assignment for that, for the whole bridge of 811, because the 634 is coming over.
Yeah.
So I think you make an assignment for the 1.3, an assignment for the 811, and then an assignment for the 660. My, my, yeah.
Better focus.
I guess, and here's.
So I think what we are looking at is, why is that not?
It was.
Auto.
We shouldn't have, it's not 1.3 to be, it's not our budget, and we shouldn't do the 660 next year for sure.
Better.
There you go.
Don't, don't anybody move. Um, so, this area right here with Sinai Bridge match, those are the numbers I think we're talking about. It's our 2.2 that we're, we have, we have the 19, the 18, or the 19 budget. So the difference between that is 8, the 836. There's some non-participating items that Doug Westall talked about with these bridges that are 100% county responsibility, and with the Sinai Bridge, that's 110,200. So, really with all of our match, and for those projects, um, the 946395 would be our match. And that does include those preliminary, or those preservation grants and the one preliminary engineering grant as well.
Commissioner Jensen, did you have a comment?
I know, when we did the 219 budget, we were under the assumption that the Sinai Bridge would get completed in 219. I mean.
Okay, so, is, are the three of you, Commissioner Bartley, Commissioner Jensen, Commissioner Miller, are you in agreement with Commissioner Krogman's proposal? I see two heads.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Pardon me, Mike?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Okay, let's do that. Will that show up then on the, because when we do assignments?
It'll have its own line and it'll, we can name it whatever we want to name it.
Okay.
But can you just restate what you want to do, so we're very, very clear? Brian?
Yep, 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 just give me a second here. So, in the road and bridge fund, under the unassigned balance right now, we want to make some assigned balances, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and the first one will be big grant, little dash, river bridges, and that would be 1.35 or whatever we want to, 1, 1.3 million, looks like that's going to be our county match. If you wanted to make it 1.3 because it might be a little strong considering the actual bid amounts. Then we would do big grant slash Sinai Bridge at 800,000. And then we would do Basin Electric Bridge, and not put big grant on there because we're not submitting that one.
But that's already, I believe that's in your, our 19 budget, I don't think you need to assign anything for that, that's in the budget for 19.
The Basin Electric is? The Basin Electric is?
Yes.
But if we assign it, then we keep track of it?
Right.
And we can, we can...
But, but you're assigning fund balance when you already have the cash in 19 that you'll have to pay for it.
Yeah.
See, that's, that's where the problem comes in. And this is where I struggled with when we built the roads, because we had money set aside to build those roads, or the road 214, I think is what, or, no, not, 34.
213.
34. We built 34th, and we had 1.5 million set aside. The problem is, is we mill levied for it, and paid for it out of, out of cash, and didn't even need to use that, or we didn't use it. And that's what concerns me about this, is setting aside the funds, if we don't have it designated, we end up mill levying for it. And I want to use this fund balance for these projects. I don't want to, because there's, for some reason, there's fund balance in there, and it's great, because we've been diligent, and our bids are coming lower, and we're conservative in our stuff, and that's great. But there's a time we need to start using that fund balance, and not mill levy for it. And we just mill levied 1.3 again for stuff I wanted to use fund balance for. And that's, that's what concerns me. And so that's why, you know, we've, we're going to have, that's why we're having a million dollars left over each year that goes into fund balance, because we continue to mill levy for it when we need to take fund balance. So how do we spend fund balance in the next year without budget, without mill levying for it? You know what I mean? How do we do something with a bridge that says, we want to repair this bridge, it's going to cost us a million bucks, but I want to use fund balance for it, not, not, not put it in the budget per se? Because then that gets mill levied for.
And that's what has to happen. It just does not go into the budget, and then you know you're going to do a supplemental budget hearing to use fund balance.
And that's why I want to have it identified, because I, that's, I want those to be used for that, and not in there, so.
And Stacy, when you say use fund balance, is there a difference between, when we do budget stuff, between cash applied and using fund balance? Are they the same thing?
They're the same thing, but when you say you're going to, assume you're going to use cash applied, and Vicky, speak up if I'm incorrect, you're assuming, you're but, we had about 1.2 million, I believe, if I bring up the annual budget, that we said we were going to use cash applied, which is fund balance in 19. So we balanced the highway budget by using fund balance. So we did do that. We are assuming that we are going to be using 1.2 of fund balance in 19. But at the same time, it has to show up in this budget document, too, because we have to have the budget authority to spend it.
Right. And that's where the problem comes in, is you, you can't spend it without budget authority.
Right.
But I guess, I don't want it in the budget, get mill levied if we have money set aside already to use it. And I don't know how we get those two to work.
When we...
Thank you, Brian. You got a comment?
I'm just using my past here a little bit. I know this is the way that Yankton County did it. And we would just have a separate fund balance, and it would need to be rolled over into the budget as we've shifted into the next year, to give us that budget authority for spending out of that year. And if it didn't happen, it could roll back into that big grant fund balance. Does that make sense to everybody?
It does.
And I think, I think Brian and Vicky and I have an understanding of what you want done for this. And I think you're on the right track with doing these assignments. I think, yes, let's do this, take this action.
All three of them.
If you want the 660, we can.
I, I, I would like that, because if it doesn't, yeah, if it doesn't, you know, we know where that's coming from. That's, we've already mill levied for it, is the problem, is I want to make sure, by having that in there, it shows that we've got money for it, that we don't need, that we can use that cash applied to go in there. So we'll take that 660 and cash apply it to that. But it's too late now, though, already, because we already budgeted for it.
But on the other hand, we can put it in, we can track it that way. If at the end of 2019, we're all done with a project, and we got money left, we unassign it, it goes back into the Road and Bridge Fund, and turns into fund balance again. And then we'll have this conversation again when we get to budget time in 2019.
Okay, so six, so 1.3 million for the River Bridges, 800,000 for the Sinai Bridge, and 660 for the Basin Bridge, all within the Highway Fund, different, separated out by different lines.
Exactly.
And, and we're not going to do anything with that, 150 for small structures, because we will have some extra money now in the budget to take care of the small structures.
Yeah. I think most of that can get absorbed at the end, you know, put in there, stuff too, so.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Brian, did you have?
I think as we work forward into the 2019 budget, I think the clarification will show up.
So Stacy, do we have to put this on another agenda to take action, or?
Nope. There was, this was discussion, action, action for designation, so you can do that today.
Okay. And we'll just have that in. Now we can go back to the General Fund, because we needed to know about the Road and Bridge Fund before we could decide what we want to do with our money in our General Fund.
Yes.
Okay. And we'll do one motion that's got it all in there?
So then back to that, which is here on the screen, you know, like I said, Vicky and I talked, and our recommendation would be between that 1.75 and 2 million to keep us closer to that 26, 28% remaining in the General Fund surplus at year end. And however you want to assign that within the General Fund, you can.
I'm going to throw out a proposal, and then you guys can tell me what you think.
Mine was going to be wild, too, but I want to hear yours first.
Hey, I'd like us to assign $2 million to the Detention Center Fund.
I was going to say one, but two's fine with me.
So we already have, excuse me, sorry about that. So right now, we already have 2 million, so you're adding another two, make it four, plus the 2.4, so we're going to be at a total of six and a half, roughly.
We would have six and a half.
That's right.
We'd have about six and a half, and then we also have the bond for 7.4, so we'd be at 13.9. So we're inching up closer to what, depending on when this thing gets built, we might be getting closer to being able to pay for it.
Amen. I think that's a great idea.
I would concur.
I would agree, too.
Commissioner Krogman?
Sure.
You want to put all of that into one motion? That, that takes care of all of our assignment issues then, right?
Yes.
So...
I guess the only, are we going to do, are we going to keep the rest of stuff the same? Future Economic Development Highway Projects at 4.7, do you want to leave it like that?
Yeah.
Because we've also had discussions about the overpass, and us willing to help with that. Obviously, we didn't get the grant, and I'm not sure where it's going. But I also don't want to, I want people to know that we had made commitments to help part of that, be part of that, be a partner of that project. It's obviously not going to pay for the whole thing, depending on where it goes. But is there interest at all to designating out of that 4.7, the 2 million to the overpass? That just shows that we've, we've shown, or we've talked about it, and we've said we're willing to do it. Again, it's in the General Fund. It can be changed. If the overpass never happens, it never happens, and still leaves 2.7 for economic development projects.
So you're proposing what we do is add another general ledger line there that is the 20th Street Interchange, right?
Yes, 20th Street, Overpass, Interchange, whatever it turns out to be, because we don't know what's going to happen in that. But that way, other entities or other partners will understand that, okay, we've designated it. We didn't raise anybody's taxes for it. It's there, it's designated, it's not spent. But it also shows entities and private people, if they're willing to invest in that, and feel like it's that important, that we've already assigned some funds for it, and that we're on board, rather than just saying, yeah, we'll do it. And six years later, when maybe the commission is completely changed, everybody says, well, I didn't do that, I didn't do that. At least when they're coming in, they know what we verbally committed to.
And that can always be unassigned if we need the money for something else.
But that's what the intent was when we did this, was so that they knew. And you guys, you know, I'm not going to be here, so it'll be all up to you, but keep in mind, they're honking at you to do, to finish 213, they're honking at you, maybe 214. So I wouldn't mess with that money right now. Because when we, when we did that, it was with the intent that we would help with that project, should it happen. So...
Didn't we not put 500,000 towards it? I thought we...
We don't have a line item for it.
No, we could if we needed.
Right.
I just, I just don't like saying, yeah, we'll do it. And all of a sudden, people plan on it, people do stuff, they make plans for it, and then we turn around and say, oh, sorry, I never said that. We're here, got it as a line item. Shows the public.
But we do have it as a line item.
It doesn't show up, though, that it's...
Future Economic Development Projects doesn't say overpass. It could mean, it doesn't say 213, doesn't say 214, all of those.
Because we did, we did, we did commit that we would improve the road up to the interchange from 34th Avenue at the time. No idea what that would cause.
Commissioner Bartley, do you have anything on this issue that you'd like to say?
Lots of different things. But as I look at it right now, the commitment was for $2 million of the project received funding, under the grant that it did not receive funding under. So to me, at this point, we don't have a project that's, that has any, any concrete start date or end date. So it's difficult for me to want to assign money to something that, that isn't there yet. So I look at it as, as, when that happens, our commitment for the 2 million is, is verbal from this particular commission that seeded. And it becomes difficult for me to try and commit those funds in the future, when it may be eight to 10 years before that, that may happen. We're committing things for future commission, that I'm not comfortable trying to do that. I think the suggestion that we would pay up to 2 million, or a $2 million was for this particular project submission that, that was rejected, or wasn't funded. So I like to look at it as it becomes a project, rather than, as Commissioner Miller said, we've got some requests to do some other roads over there that are around that $2 million figure. And if those are appropriate to do first, we should be looking at that, to make sure that we have that completed with funds before we commit to something that we don't know that's going to happen at this point.
So all of you know that I support Daley finishing 213. We beat that drum. And if I'm hearing somebody say, let's commit money to that, but that's not exactly what I heard.
That is not what you heard.
Okay. So I support Commissioner Krogman in setting aside $2 million on the, from the Future Economic Development Fund, and calling it the 20th Street Interchange/Overpass. So that kind of makes us 2-2. Commissioner Jensen, what's your thoughts?
Is, so if we need it for something else, we can unassign it?
We can. We can take it back out anytime we want.
I guess I wasn't looking at the full 2 million myself, but...
What are you looking at?
One.
Okay.
Because I, too, like, on 213, there is some drainage issues and some structure issues. I feel we can move forward and do those structures. We don't have to upgrade the road right now. But if we do use some of that money for structures on that stretch of road...
That would be great.
But I, to show good intentions, too, towards the interchange also, right? I'd agree with Mr. Bartley, too.
Commissioner Krogman?
Sure. Sounds good. Compromise to me.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is Commissioner Jensen saying, take a million out of that fund and assign it to a general line, ledger line item that's called 20th Street Overpass slash Interchange. And Commissioner Krogman's in favor, I'm in favor. Do we actually, I don't think we actually, at this point, need to vote on that. Do you want to vote on that separate from all of our other assignments? Because I think we had a consensus on the other things, or?
Can I just, to make things clear, I think you need to take action to unassign the 1 million first, as a separate action item.
Okay.
And then, if you want to do that assignment along with the other assignments, you could. But I would do the motion to unassign 1 million of the 4.75 as a standalone action item.
Do we have a motion for that?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All of yours?
No.
Okay. And Commissioner Bartley, you said aye, is that correct?
Aye.
Okay. And then do we have a motion, we're going to do this separate from the other ones, then do we have a motion to assign that million dollars to the 20th Street Overpass Interchange?
So I'll move. And this is in the General Fund.
Exactly. Commissioner Jensen, are you second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
No.
Motion passes. Now, did anybody else have any assignments from the General Fund that we should discuss besides that? So are we ready to have a motion, then, to assign the 1.3, the 811, the 660, and the 2 million?
One more question. How much, if we pull the 2 million, how much does that leave us with unassigned in the General Fund?
26%.
Which is...
It would be about 26%.
Right. That's the percentage. But how much, what dollar amount is, you know? Because there's an unassigned to balance certain amount, right? And we're going to sign some of it, so it's going to leave us with 20, some type of a number, which is 26% of our total budget, right? Do we know what that is? Is it like 2.5 million?
I don't count that.
Okay. Not a big deal.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what that number is. You can pull that up real quick, if you give me a second.
That's okay. Don't worry about it. I'm sure we'll find out. It's not going to change.
Okay.
So we, do we have a motion on those four assignments?
Can you clarify the, it's exactly 1.3 million?
We're going to have, somebody make a motion that's going to clarify. Is that going to be you, Commissioner Krogman?
Sure, yeah. Didn't we already do the...
We didn't have the motion. We had the conversation, we just need to add the 2 million for the jail in there.
Okay. So my motion is in the Road and Bridge Fund, right? We already do that one.
Nope.
Okay. 1.3 million for the River Bridges, 800,000 for the Sinai Bridge, and 660 for Basin Electric Bridge. In the General Fund, additional 2 million from unassigned to the Detention Center, signed as Detention Center, and...
We already did that next, the end.
Yeah, we already did the 1 million for the overpass.
So that would be it, then? Those four? Okay. That'd be my motion.
Is that clear enough, Stacy? Do we, do we have a second?
Second.
And we will have a voice vote on that, right? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Stacy, does that complete your report, or was there something more?
I had a couple other things real quick. It was discussed at the last meeting about changing the start date of the construction on those River Bridges from March to February. I know Brian had reached out to DOT, and no formal action was needed. It was just, they needed to know if, basically, if we were okay with that. So he, Brian, let them know that, and we're going to move forward with the February start, if that works out weather-wise. We did not receive any applications yet for the Archery Range Committee for the BCOAC Advisory Board. Direction from the board, I'm, can I, I would like to just post that, open until filled at this point. We've posted it a couple different times, and, and we're not meeting our deadlines. So if we can just leave it open until we get an application, if that's acceptable, we'll move in that direction.
Anybody opposed to that?
Nope.
Okay, go ahead.
And then, some upcoming dates. Tuesday next week, we will be, the offices will be closed... Tuesday next week, we will be, the offices will be closed for the New Year's Day holiday. Again, January second, we do have that special meeting where we will do, um, the reorganization of the board. And then those of you who were newly elected or re-elected, we will have oaths of office and photos, and that will all start at eight thirty, uh, here at the chambers. On the fourteenth, you have the Volga Fire Department County Feed that starts at five thirty over at the Fire Hall over in Volga. And I'd just like to take this time to say a couple of thank yous. Commissioner Pierce, thank you for your chairmanship this past year. It has been, um, it has been very interesting. And.
What can I say?
But I've learned a lot working with you. I really have, and it has been a great year. And I appreciate your openness and your reception to answer questions and your availability as chair as well. So thank you for that. And Commissioner Miller, I'm going to miss you. Stay in touch. That's all I have.
Okay. Moving on to commissioner reports. Commissioner Jensen?
Uh, the only thing I had, uh, received a couple of phone calls, um, on the incident in White over, uh, some radio communications. I've talked to, uh, a couple people and will continue to work on, uh, improving the radio communication. So, that's all I have.
Commissioner Miller?
Um, on the eighteenth, after our meeting, I went to my retirement party, which, thank you, thank you, thank you, was a very, very nice party, very nice. Um, on December nineteenth, I had extension board where I was thanked warmly for my support to four H. And we discussed where we were in the budget and plans for the twenty nineteen budget. On December twenty-first, I didn't realize there was a picture in the morning, but I did dress up for the festive attire day. So. So that's all I have, that's my last report.
Thank you. Commissioner Krogman?
I didn't have anything going on. I just want to thank Commissioner Miller for her service. A pleasure to work with.
On, uh, December nineteenth, we had a joint jurisdiction meeting. We looked at, started looking at the first draft of the written joint jurisdiction ordinance. We've got more work to do, but we saw a first draft. On, uh, December nineteenth, I also attended the BEDC quarterly meeting. And came away from that meeting, we talked a lot about budget. And by two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, in that time period, BEDC is going to need some economic support and we'll have to make some decisions regarding that as we're doing non-mandated budget stuff in the future. And then, um, I've been working with Commissioner Bartley, who I forgot to call on for his report. We're gonna do him next, uh, regarding the jail and with some city officials on the twenty-first and we're, we continue to work on that project. I too, first of all, would like to thank Stacy for all the help she's given me this year as chair. And it was, we did have an interesting year, no matter who would have been chair, yes, it was. And Commissioner Miller, thank you very much for everything you've done for Brookings County. Commissioner Bartley, I'm sorry, I missed you. You go ahead and give your report now.
Okay. Well, thank you, Commissioner Pierce. You've covered most of the things that I also covered, just joint jurisdiction and the, uh, other meetings, so I don't have a, uh, long report here. Thank you again, Commissioner Miller. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Uh, I know we got off on, on a different foot when we started, but I think we've worked extremely well together. I appreciate your service.
All right. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session in accordance with SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two, subpart one and subpart three, personnel and consulting with legal counsel.
I'll move.
We'll have a roll call vote? Why, why is that roll call, Stacy? We can have a voice vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in executive session.
Mike?
Yeah.
I am going to hang up and then.